January eighth, twenty twenty four. Distinguished guests, commissioners, members of the executive branch. Good evening and welcome to the annual State of the City address. The city charter states, "The mayor shall communicate to the city commission and to the general public a statement of the affairs and management of the city each January and may make recommendations regarding these matters." Established in nineteen seventy six, the city charter underscores Helena, Montana as the proud seat of our state government. It is a community with a colorful past and a vibrant future. There is an openness and basic decency that beckons each of our citizens to contribute to its unique identity. To our diverse and industrial city commission, I wish to say thank you. Your thoughtful and poised discourse, even in the face of diverging opinion, proves democratic process conducted and respected can accomplish great things. To our amazing city employees, I extend a special acknowledgement. The city, the city's many successes may not be possible without your hard work. On behalf of the commission, I extend our sincere thanks and look forward to all, and look forward to all that you achieve in the new year. The city would not be successful without the efforts of community members who step up to serve. I commend the members of these boards for their generously volunteering their time to ensure the seamless functioning of our city. A special recognition goes out to the diligent members of Helena Citizens Council. Your efforts are truly appreciated and the city's budget process is strengthening by your contributions. In addition to the committed individuals within the city organization, we must recognize those working to foster our community's growth. Helena boasts a thriving business community and it is imperative that we support policies and initiatives conducive to a robust and diverse economy. We can work to pave the way for thoughtful growth for throughout the next century. The city will continue to bring all stakeholders to the table and ask how many, and ask how we may help one another to accomplish great things during times, during a time great change for Helena and Montana. Nonprofit organization, business communities, members and residents. We all need each other to see Helena and we want, we all need each other to see that Helena we want to be in twenty fifty, not just today. Tonight, I aim to share noteworthy accomplishments of twenty twenty three and shed lights on ongoing projects propelling us towards the realization of commission's strategic outcome in twenty four. Citywide, the city was accepted into the National Leagues of Cities Racial Equity and Leadership Institute. The mayor, city attorney and human resources director represented Helena as one of the ten cohorts teams to participate in the inaugural REAL Institute. The experience were incredible, impactful, as participants learned how to focus on leading for racial equity, communicating effective about race, visualizing a racial equitable future and bringing about system change by building racial equity infrastructure for organizational change. The city manager's office, some of the accomplishment of this office. The city manager's office provided a structured and transparent process for allocating general fund savings created through opera funds. Staff from the city manager office helped coordinate the Montana Leagues of Cities and Towns Conference, which brought approximately four hundred and fifty municipal leaders and elected officials from around the state of Helen, of Montana. The city manager's office led the transition to a new website, which has greatly improved the community ability to access important information from the city. Some of the goals of this office. In twenty twenty four, the city manager office will lead the effort to upgrade the city public's meeting agenda system. The city manager office will continue to focus on improving operational efficiencies to provide a better customer experience for the public. The city manager office will lead the creation of a balanced budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, focusing on employees retention and the city's capital improvement plan. City attorney's office. This past year, the city attorney's office implemented workflow to better coordinate the city department for review of contracts and resolutions. A great deal of effort was spent updating various sections of the city code to comply with legislative update and modernized language to reflect current needs. Finally, the city attorney's office implemented in-depth training for the Helena Police Department as well as regular training for new offices. The goal of this office, in twenty twenty four, the attorney's office will implement a plan for system review for racial equity. They will continue to work towards reviewing Helena city code for updates and revision. The city attorney's office will expand and broaden the victim services program to better serve city department and city residents. Clerk of the commission's office. In twenty twenty three. In twenty twenty three, the city clerk successfully completed the administrative and governance policy board project, which redefines how city and city commission interact with cities, citizen advisory boards. The project created consistency in administrative processes and standardization of the governance practices allowing for a more fair and open citizens, citizen engagement throughout the city boards and committees. The clerk office team began implementing the archival of digital records and launched phase one of the online portal for accessing public records. In twenty twenty four, the clerk's office will begin to enter, will begin the introduction to a revised and modernized public records management and retention policy utilizing digital creation and exchange of city works product resulting in more efficient internal processes and grid access to the public records more than ever before. Community development. In twenty twenty three, the city approved the first project through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, providing one mill for approximately seven affordable housing units. Through the community development department, the city also completed the first home renewal program project, funding health and safety related renovations needed for low income households. The community development department team facilitated a discussion and worked with local nonprofits to find solutions for emergency housing during the winter for our own house citizens. The planning team also coordinated the annexation of remaining portion of Mount Helena City Park and continued work on the Six Ward Railroad District Neighborhood Plan. Planning staff created an online housing development map representing all new housing development approved by the city commission since twenty nineteen. Approximately ten projects through the residential energy efficiency renewal energy blown programs. Finally, the city began a major update to the city's signed codes. Some of the goals in twenty twenty four, community development hopes to complete a second home renewal program project. The housing coordinator will also lead the effort to support additional projects through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The community development team will begin work on a new land use plan for the city, along with implementation of the Montana Land Use Planning Act. Staff will also complete the Six Ward Railroad District Neighborhood Plan and continue focusing on collaboration with the county in joint planning efforts. Last, the community development department will launch a full suite of online mapping tools to support the development of the city. Community facilities, twenty twenty three. The community facilities department had fifty nine active projects in twenty twenty three. Upgrade of all light fixtures on the first floor of the city county building to LED. Remodel the second floor offices of the Law and Justice Center. Replace the roof of the Grand Street Theater. Upgraded the auto visual technology in several conference rooms to allow for hybrid public meetings. Coordinated the painting of a mural inside of the Centennial Trail Tunnel at Centennial Park, which was completed in August. Some of the goals for twenty twenty four. The community facilities team will be focused on approximately twenty five projects. They include upgrading several boilers to energy efficient model at the Law and Justice Center, fleet management shop and main fire station. They'll be replacing the fleet maintenance shop roof. They will replace the south roof of the Law and Justice Center. LED lightning upgrades at several facilities. Coordinate the painting of a mural in the Lindell Tunnel. Finance department. The finance department added a new budget analyst position in twenty twenty three. This position provides a key support role as the city goes through the budget process in the future. In twenty twenty three, the city received our thirty fourth consecutive GFAO certificate achievement award for our fiscal year twenty one annual comprehensive finance, financial report. The finance team also secured a contract for a new auditing firm that brings a wealth of government accounting experience to the city annual audit. Finally, finance department staff led the implementation of the city new enterprise resource planning system that will impact all aspect of city operation. The goal for twenty twenty four, the finance team is working to launch the new ERP systems core financial suite in January. Finance will continue to support launching additional models of the ERP system, which will include HR, payroll, permitting, licensing, utility, customer service. Fire departments, twenty twenty three. In twenty twenty three, the Helena Fire Department exceeded the previous year's calls for service, which was more than forty eight hundred. The fire department master plan was completed, which is being utilized to drive strategic and capital plans for the organization. Thanks to approval from the city commission and an old type six wire LAN engine that was damaged during the fire has been replaced with a new engine. Last year, the fire department instituted new record management software, which handles scheduling, fire inspection, incident pre-planning, dispatch integration. The new system will improve data quality and will be, will be integral to data-driven decisions making in years to come. The fire department, Fire Prevention and Investigation Bureau continues to experience high level of new construction plan examination and ongoing commercial occupancy inspections. The goals are, in cooperation with city leadership, the fire department is working to bring forward discussions about level of public safety service and how the city can fund the community's need for expand services in the future. Helena Fire Department will continue to seek out grant funding and other revenues opportunities to meet our ever increasing costs and needs. Municipal court. Twenty twenty three, Helena Municipal Court completed implementation and training for a new court software system. Municipal court staff continue with implementation of status hearing as a system for checking in with defendants to follow up on their compliance. For fiscal year twenty twenty three, municipal court processed four thousand seven hundred citations. The cops were busy. In twenty twenty four goals, in twenty twenty four, municipal court will focus on continue to provide efficient, effective and impartial services. Human resources. Twenty twenty three accomplishments. The city human resources team was busy in twenty twenty three, moving forward, moving forward effort to improve employees retention and recruitment. Human resources led a salary market analysis and implemented cost of living wage increases. The human resources team also developed and implemented several new policies and updated multiple existing policies. Human resources was busy working on the new HR payroll platform through ERP system, which would be a huge benefit to all employees once it launches in twenty twenty four. The city successfully negotiated a contract for police records and telecommunications, while also moving forward contract negotiations with the Helena Police Protective Association. The goal of HR, the HR team will lead strategic implementation of goals and principles learned through the REAL Institute. HR will also continue to develop the development of a market-based play, pay plan. HR department will work on further policies update to addresses ERP implementation, compliance, industry best practices and operational efficiencies. Parks, recreation and open land. Twenty twenty three. The parks maintenance team accomplished some big projects, including new arts and playground equipment at Leopold Church Park, resurfaced tennis courts at Lucky Park, as well as new picnic shelters, upgrading playground equipment at Memorial Park. Civic Center saw a full calendar with two hundred and six dates booked throughout the year. The city recreation facilities were in high demands once again with over twenty thousand visitors to Last Chance Splash and Pool, along with five thousand people skating at the Memorial Park ice rink. The recreation team led another successful year of K's Kit, providing a full of summer programming for eighty plus children each week over the summer. The community came together to support two new recreation events, as well as the city hosted an Arbor Day tree planting event and a Christmas tree decorating event at Mount Helena. Bill Robert Golf Course experienced a full twenty twenty three season between golf leagues and tournament, cross-country running, cross-country ski and even disc golf. The junior program Bill Roberts had over seventy participant, which was an increase of twenty kids from twenty twenty two. Additionally, Bill Roberts is proud to support several important community programs, such as Special Olympics training for athletes, hosting a disabled American veteran golf tournament and partnering with the Last Chance Nordic Ski Club to provide cross-country skiing for the public. Some of the goals are, in twenty twenty four, the park recreation and open land team will continue focusing on needed improvements to the city park, trails and facilities, while providing high-quality recreation opportunities. The team will complete the project to, to repair our iconic fire tower. Finally, the city will continue to monitor for the emerald ash bora and improve the structure of Helena urban forestry by increasing the planting of new trees. Police. Twenty twenty three accomplishments. The police department worked hard in twenty twenty three to overcome staffing issues. The department is nearly at full staffing levels and only three shortages and expect to be fully staffed by the middle of twenty twenty four. The police department partnered with the Helena School District to donate eighteen AED machines. Helena Police Department also worked with the school district to implement the Handle with Care Program, which has been overwhelmingly successful so far. The Leave Behind Program for Narcan was implemented, allowing officers to leave doses of Narcan at locations where opiate use is suspected. Animal Control started a trap neuter program for furor cats and has been extremely successful so far. Police Department carried on traditions of annual Kurt Stinson Memorial Blood Drive and had the highest number of attendees so far. The Criminal Investigation Department did an incredible amount of work, successfully investigating many complex cases. Some of the goals for twenty twenty four, the police department will work on reaching sufficient staffing to start more community-oriented policing projects like Bike Patrol, Community Resource Officers and utilize beats for the routine patrol. The department will work on implementation of a successful overhaul of the CAT RMS systems with a tentative goal live date of twenty twenty four or early twenty twenty five. Finally, police department is committed to increasing the public information sharing and community outreach. Public Works. The Public Works Department made substantial progress on facility improvement and impact all aspect of the services. The water treatment division made improvement to the ten-mile treatment facility that resulted in more efficiency and less chemical use. The first round of groundwater well was also drilled at the Missouri River Plan. Public Works received one hundred and forty seven thousand grand to install a new piece of equipment at the wastewater treatment plant that will serve approximately, that will save approximately thirty eight thousand worth of energy costs per year. The transfer station saw the installation of a new automated entrance gate. Sustainability continued to be a priority within the Public Works with several new projects coming online. The city installed two electric vehicle charging stations, completed an in-depth analysis of water use in the city and started a monthly sustainability newsletter. Some of the goals for twenty twenty four Public Works. They will increase, they will implement new meter software and reading equipment. Public Works will also complete a sustainability plan and audit and focus on pursuing grant funding for sustainability projects. Public Works will finish the groundwater exploration project in Helena Valley to ensure the city is maximizing its groundwater rights. The City of Helena Transfer Station will complete phase two of the transfer station entrance to include a recycling drop-off location and intersection update. Finally, the City of Helena, in collaboration with the Lewis and Clark County, has contracted to develop an integrated solid waste master plan to be completed in fiscal year twenty four. Transportation Systems, some of the accomplishments of twenty three. In twenty three, the transportation team led the transition of Helena, Lewis and Clark County and the City of East Helena to a metropolitan planning organization. The city helped fifteen different household bring their sidewalks up to ADA standards through the sidewalk loan programs. In total, one thousand three hundred and sixty linear feet of sidewalks were placed. The city contractor with a company to complete the LIDAR scan of all city streets, a set which will provide the city with interactive system to manage transportation assets. The Streets Division was busy in twenty twenty three, completing over eight lanes, eight lane miles of mill and overlay work, over eleven lane miles of chip and seal, while grading approximately one hundred and forty alley blocks and repairing estimated two thousand three hundred potholes. The Street Division. Capital Transit saw consistent growth in use throughout its demand response model. Transit also received a twelve-month overall rider experience rating at ninety-eight percent. This include a twelve-month overall on-time percentage of ninety-two point five percent. The Parking Division continued to focus on improving parking facilities per ADA audit. Seventy-nine special events application were completed through the, the new online process. Some of the goals for the transportation systems. The transportation system team will be busy in twenty twenty four with projects and studies, including finishing the transition to a metropolitan planning organization, implementing the new transportation asset system into daily operations, completing up to five lane miles of mill and overlay works and over thirteen lane miles of chip and seal. Evaluate, evaluating expansion of capital transit services to Helena North and West Valley and possibly extending service days and hours of operation. Lastly, implementing an online payment online for permits and parking tickets. In conclusion. In the ongoing pursuit of progress, Helena remains steadfast in collaboration with essential partners like Lewis and Clark County, the State of Montana, East Helena, YWCA, Helena Food Share, National Park Service, Helena Housing Authority, Rocky Mountain Development Council, United Way, Helena Regional Airport and various others. The road ahead demands our commitment to address challenges, particularly in ensuing affordable housing and enhancing public safety for our vulnerable population. All while embodying the principles and charitable spirit ingrained in our community. Hand in hand with our dedicated partners, we are poised not only to meet these challenges, but to surpass them. All while upholding our fiscal responsibility and serving those who have entrusted us with these crucial decisions. Guided by the city charter, Helena as the esteemed seat of our city government aspire to be a beacon for the future of our great state. Ladies and gentlemen, the state of affairs of the City of Helena remains strong. I thank you all and I look forward to serving you in the years to come. God bless the city, State of Montana and these United States. Thank you. Okay, now we start our regular meeting. Okay, I welcome you again to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, January eighth, twenty twenty four. The time is six twenty eight. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll, please?
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is states, a nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amendments for twelve thirteen twenty-three admin meeting. Twelve fourteen twenty-three commission manager strategic planning session one. Twelve fifteen twenty-three commission manager strategic planning session two. And twelve eighteen twenty-three commission meetings were received. Commissioners, any addition? Consent agenda, one motion. Consider change order number one for city projects number twenty-one dash zero eight nine hundred block Flory Sewer Main Extension. Main Extension. Director Leland.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is a change order for shared service lines that we are installing for the water main extensions. There were several services connected together to residents, and it's our established policy to go in there and put a water main in. We budgeted each year, so we went in there to do this and ran into a lot of rock. We did not know about this rock beforehand in any way to go and do it. We did 52 yards of cubic, cubic yards of rock, and it was over the 10%, which was, which was budgeted, or not budgeted, but what was estimated and was bid. So we just need to extend the contract. The contract was for $74,445, and it's going to add another $20,000 roughly to it, so we had to come back for a change order. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve Consent Agenda Item A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Bid Award. Community Facilities Bid Award for the Law and Justice Center Boiler Replacement Project, CF-3915. Facility Director Sampson, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Evening.
We're here tonight, we have a bid award for the Law and Justice Center Boiler Replacement Project. The bids for this boiler project were open and read aloud at 2:00 PM on December 19, 2023, in Route 326, the City County Building. We received two bids, one from Tri-County Mechanical and Electric for $579,647, and Montana City Plumbing and Heating for $582,590. This award is based on the lowest responsible cumulative base bid. City staff believe the base bid submitted by Tri-County Mechanical and Electrical is fair and reasonable. So consider awarding the contract to Tri-County Mechanical and Electrical for $579,647.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, I'm wondering, or Superintendent, I guess, can you talk a little bit about these new boilers are going to improve the efficiency? And I'm curious if you have any details about some of the technology. The reason I'm wondering is that in the last couple of years, I know a ton of school districts have moved to heat pumps, and they are, I mean, their energy consumption is plummeted. And so I'm wondering if you could maybe talk a little bit about how these will be beneficial to our efforts to be more sustainable?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, so we currently, the boilers that we have in place now, there's two of them, and they are steam boilers, which are known to be less efficient than a hot water heat pump system or a hot water boiler system. The proposed design boilers is four boilers. They'll be hot water. They're much smaller, that's why we have four, and they are much more energy efficient. So they're going to make more of an even heat throughout the building and certainly save us energy. So where the ones that we have right now are probably in that 60% efficient range, these are right at that 89% to 90% efficient.
You bet. Any other comments from the Commission? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to award the Law and Justice Center Boiler Replacement Project Number CF-3915 to the lowest responsible bidder, Tri-County Mechanical and Electric Incorporated, in the amount of $579,647.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Commission proposes, Commissioners, do you have anything? Man, this is going. Reporter of the City Attorney, Attorney Doctor.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I do have a report tonight. Judge Salvani, who's a Gallatin County judge out of Bozeman, issued a preliminary injunction on two bills that affect Helena, Senate Bill 323 and 528. Just as a reminder, those are, 323 is a bill that requires municipalities with a population of more than 5,000 residents to allow a duplex as a permitted right wherever a single-family dwelling is, a lot for a single-family residence occurs. Senate Bill 528 requires every municipality in Montana to allow an accessory dwelling unit where a single-family dwelling is a permitted use. Your agenda tonight, 12B, actually includes an agenda item that is a public hearing for the amendment to Title 11 of the city code, in part was requested because of Senate Bill 528. Because of that, you'll hear from Director Brink, change in the recommendation that you see in your materials, to table at the call of the, of the city manager. We didn't pull the agenda item because it had already been noticed as a public hearing, and there may be people here tonight that want to testify on the matter. So we kept it on the agenda, but the recommendation will change. And just finally, although the judge's preliminary order dealt with those two bills directly, the, the case, the underlying case in which the preliminary injunction was issued deals with four bills, those two, and then including Senate Bill 245 and Senate Bill 382. You might recognize that one is the Montana Land Use Planning Act, and those two still remain intact, and we will continue to implement those two bills until and if we hear any differently through the courts. But other than, unless you have questions, other than that, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Director. Attorney Doctor. Comments for, from the Commission? Reporter to City Manager, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to invite Director McManup to give a report on the two outstanding labor contracts that we're negotiating right now.
You bet. You have the floor, Director McMan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. A quick update, we did settle and ratify the records contract back in December, so that one's now in place. We are working out, as of last Tuesday, the final details of the police, the Helena Protective Police Association contract. We feel like we have all the principles in place, just working on the final details to get that one ratified. We will start fire negotiations here in a couple of months. Any questions?
Commissioners? Thank you, Director McMan.
Thank you.
Are you done?
Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Helena Communications from Helena Citizens Council. HCC Representative Ben Kuiper, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
I don't have a whole lot to report today. Our next meeting is on January 24, where the mayor will be swearing in the new Helena Citizens Council. Just to remind you, we still do have four seats open from the last election cycle, so we look forward to working with the Clerk's office and all of you to get those appointed as soon as we start getting applications for those. So unless there's any questions, that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuiper. Regular items. Consider Final Passage of an Ordinance to Adopt International Fire Code 2021 Edition. Chief Campbell, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. For your consideration tonight as the final reading of the ordinance to pass and adopt the 2021 International Fire Code, there's no material changes to it since you've seen this before, other than to say it has been adequately publicly noticed, and I can answer any questions.
Questions from the Commission? Do you have any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to adopt the 2021 Fire Code as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Public hearings. Consider Final Passage of an Ordinance Revising Subdivision Review Procedures. Phase subdivision requirement expedited subdivision review processes, requirements for determination of subsequent hearing when considering a new information, revising the criteria and review requirement of exempt division, and providing criteria exemption and administrative process, and appeal process for the certain minor subdivision by amending Chapter Two and Chapter Five of Title 12 of the Helena City Code. Planner Shirley, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Okay, and I believe everyone can see the slides that I have for the evening. All right, yes, thank you. This is for Final Passage of an Ordinance to Update the subdivision regulations in the Helena City Code to comply with 2023 Land Use Code Updates from the 2023 Legislative Session. These motivating legislations are House Bill 211, an act revising the local subdivision review process, Senate Bill 158, an act revising family transfer law, providing, excuse me, exemptions from subdivision reviews, and Senate Bill 170, an act to allow for administrative minor subdivision review. To start off, House Bill 211, changes include phase subdivisions no longer require a public hearing until five years after preliminary plat approval. A new process has been provided for public hearings on new information for subdivision applications, as well as variances are now allowed for expedited subdivisions, meeting all other requirements. What this looks like for the public is before, all phase subdivisions required a public hearing by the city commission. Now, a public hearing is required only if five or more years have elapsed since preliminary plat approval. A written notice for such a phase must be provided within 90 days and a full calendar, or a full calendar year, prior to submitting a final plat application. There's also a new process, including a public hearing, which will be held within 30 working days of the final plat application, where the city commission may amend or impose additional conditions of approval if it determines that the existing conditions of approval are inadequate to mitigate the potentially significant adverse impacts identified during the original review based on changed circumstances. Additionally, the sections below in red have been removed and combined into a new process called Subsequent Hearings Considering New Information, which states that the city commission shall determine whether the public comments or other information presented at public hearings constitutes relevant new information regarding a subdivision application or a substantial change to the design of the subdivision that has never been submitted as evidence or been considered by the city commission or the community development department, and has a substantial effect on the city commission's consideration of the application. If the city commission determines that the information presented to it constitutes relevant new information, the city commission may approve, conditionally approve, or deny the subdivision without basing its decision on the new information if it is either irrelevant or not credible, or the change to the design of the subdivision does not substantially impact the analysis of potentially significant adverse impacts, or they may schedule a new hearing for consideration of only the new information. If the new information is submitted, requires a new public hearing, all deadline requirements for the subdivision review are suspended, and a new hearing must be noticed and held within 45 days of the city commission's determination. All timelines resume at the next scheduled public hearing meeting, for which proper public notice can be provided, and no new information presented after the hearing may be considered when deciding to approve, conditionally approve, or deny the proposed subdivision. Lastly, variances are now allowed for expedited subdivisions, meeting all other requirements. If the subdivision application meets the criteria for expedited review and includes a request for variance, the time for the governing body to hold a hearing is extended to 45 working days since there is a variance. Summary for Senate Bill 158, the new legislation provides for an exemption from additional subdivision reviews if certain conditions are met, and provides a penalty for evasion of subdivision regulations through family transfer exemptions. What's new for the public? A division within a platted subdivision is exempt from additional subdivision review and subject to any zoning regulations if the division is within a platted subdivision that has been approved by the local governing body, creates parcels of a size allowed within the subdivision, and is gifted or sold to a member of the landowner's immediate family. If the division meets the criteria above, an amended plat must be filed with the county clerk and recorder, and except as otherwise provided, any restrictions or requirements on the platted subdivision continue to apply. Furthermore, an exempt division of land that is also located in a zoning district is allowed if each family transfer parcel created by the division is at least five acres unless the zoning district allows for a smaller lot size, and a division of land transferred to an immediate family member may be transferred regardless of age and may be owned jointly with that immediate members, ooh, excuse me, immediate family member's spouse. Lastly, a summary of Senate Bill 170, there is a new administrative process for minor subdivisions meeting statutory criteria. These are called administrative minor subdivisions, and they are exempt from impact and environmental assessments and other review criteria. Administrative minor subdivisions have a 30-working day review by city staff. Before, all minor subdivisions required an impact summary and city commission approval. Now, an administrative minor subdivision must be reviewed using the new administrative process provided if the proposed subdivision is subject to and complies with zoning regulations, has a will-serv letter from municipal water and sewer service, has existing legal and physical access to each lot, and does not require a variance. Administrative minor subdivisions will be exempt from submitting an impact summary and environmental assessment, the review criteria described in 7636083A of the Montana Code annotated, and requirements of subsections two through five of Title 763609 of the Montana Code annotated. For the administrative subdivision, minor subdivision review process, the subdivision administrators, either the director of community development and the city engineer or their designated representatives, shall assume all decision-making authority of the city commission. They shall approve, conditionally approve, or deny the administrative minor subdivision, and issue a written statement within 30 working days of a determination that the application is sufficient for review, and immediately upon determination of sufficiency notified by first-class mail the pending application, each property owner of record whose property is immediately adjoining the land, including in the, included in the preliminary plat, and each person or under contract for deed of a property immediately adjoining the land included in the preliminary plat. If a party identified above objects to a decision to approve, conditionally approve, or deny an administrative minor subdivision, that party may request in writing that the application be forwarded to the city manager. The city commission shall sustain the decision The city commission shall sustain the decision based on the whole record unless the decision was arbitrary, capricious, or unlawful. The city commission has 15 working days from the receipt of the request to review a decision regarding an administrative minor subdivision and make a final determination. Staff recommends final passage of an ordinance revising subdivision review procedures, phased subdivision requirements, expedited subdivision review processes, requirements for determination of subsequent hearing when considering new information, revising the criteria and review requirements of exempt divisions, and providing criteria exemptions and administrative processes and an appeals process for certain minor subdivisions by amending Chapter 2 and Chapter 5 of Title 12 of the Helena City Code. Are there any questions for Mayor and Commissioners?
Comments?
I know that was a lot.
Comments or questions from the Commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve final passage of an ordinance revising subdivision review procedures, phased subdivision requirements, expedited subdivision review processes, requirements for determination of subsequent hearing when considering new information, revising the criteria and review requirements of exempt divisions, and providing criteria exemptions and an administrative process and an appeals process for certain minor subdivisions by amending Chapter 2 and Chapter 5 of Title 12 of the Helena City Code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
You're coming back, right? Okay, consider the final passage of an ordinance establishing accessory dwelling unit zoning regulation and eliminating off-street parking requirement for accessory dwelling units by amending Chapter 4 and Chapter 22 of Title 11 of the Helena City Code. Director Brink, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So I'll make this short and sweet. Had a longer presentation, but in light of what Attorney Doctor mentioned in her report, and if you'll allow me, I'll read this, this memo that's hopefully been provided to you with the updated motion. Considering a recent decision from the Montana 18th Judicial District Court in Gallatin County relative to Senate Bill 528 and 323, staff would like to, to make a change in our original recommendation on the proposed amendments to Title 11 of the Helena City Code, which is the zoning ordinance section of City Code. It does remain the case that the proposed zoning text amendment is of value and provides clarification to a currently allowed land use in Montana, or City of Helena, and I want to preference and, and highlight that we currently allow as a land use. So just because we've been enjoying from enforcing 528, which is relative to ADUs, we still allow it. We have for a decade or more. That's not going to change. What this Senate bill does is provide some definition and clarity about what ADUs are. However, staff feels that amending our zoning ordinance at this time with the proposed accessory dwelling unit language as outlined and passed by the state should be reconsidered in order to comply with the judge's order. With that, staff recommends that the city commission move to table Agenda Item 12B, subject to the city manager's discretion, to bring this item back in the future. I'm open to any questions. I'm sure you may have some.
Thank you, Director Brink. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do you have any public comments on this? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to table until the call of the city manager, final passage of an ordinance establishing accessory dwelling unit zoning regulations, eliminating off-street parking requirements for accessory dwelling units by amending Chapter 4 and Chapter 22 of Title 11 of the Helena City Code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion to table carries five to zero.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Any final discussion from the Commission? This meeting is adjourned.